All right, well, good evening, everyone. It is officially six o'clock. And if we could all stand and say pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everyone, tonight. We've got a good show here. We've got lots of things to go through tonight. And, you know, the cold weather, I guess, didn't stop you guys from coming in, right? And I guess we can't complain. No mosquitoes. All right, well, let's start in our meeting here. Let's go to the administrators' report on agenda posting and notification of the meeting to the media.
Very good. The agenda was posted at the Three Lakes School, the Sugar Camp School in the town of Sugar Camp, the town of Three Lakes by email, the town of Monaco by email. And the media notified via email included the Vilas County News, the Northwoods River News, WRJO News, WXPR Radio, and WACD, WATK Radio.
All right, thank you for that. Any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Yes, I would like to make an amendment to item 5F, changing the date of 2023 to 2025.
Okay. All right. extension on the date. Okay. Any other amendments?
No.
Okay, I will seek a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, motion by Josh, second by Colette. Any other questions? Hearing none. Call the vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard. Motion passes four to zero. We are missing Terry McCloskey here tonight, so it'll just be us four. Just a note also, further on in the agenda, perhaps we'll be getting some information here real soon. I see just Charlie just walked in. We will be interrupting the meeting for a short duration. Josh is going to be part of presentation at tonight's game. And so we'll allow him that time to go. And, well, maybe that'll be our halftime show. All right. Moving on to approving minutes of the December 15th, 2021 regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the December 15th, 2021 regular meeting.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Stacy, second by Josh. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard. Motion passes four to zero. Next, we have approving the vouchers/cheque register for the period of December 10th, 2021 through January 18th, 2022.
I will make the motion to approve the checks dated December 10th, 2021 through January 18th, 2022 for accounts payable checks number 212200080 through 212200122. Regular checks number 125835 through 126006 with voided checks number 124705, 124726, 124854, 124941, 125057, and 125077. And manual checks dated, I'm sorry, numbered 5258 through 5270 in the amount of $703,533.41. And ACH payroll checks number 900036688 through 900036996. And regular payroll checks number 59180 through 59183 in the amount of $421,978.16 for a total amount of $1,125,511.57.
All right, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Josh, second by Stacy. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard. Motion passes four to zero. Public comments. Hearing comments from visitors regarding tonight's agenda items. Who is wishing to speak on these agenda items? Who's with me? We have representatives from the junior class here. All right. And Kelly and?
I'm Val.
Thank you. Any others? Okay. Moving on to administrators' report.
Very good.
Terry.
Thank you. If you recall, last month, we introduced the administrative report, administrators' report, where it gives us the opportunity to sometimes just meet to share and highlight some things going on that wouldn't necessarily be a new business or action item. I just wanted to remind you of where that came from. So, things that I wanted to just share with the board and bring you up to speed on is I am currently working on policy updates at my level, reviewing policies that need to be brought to you. It's an ongoing process. Next month, it's my goal to bring to you two policies. First of all, we need to look at our policy on approving policy. I'd like to talk about how we do that in the protocols and procedures. From, it's rather vague from how it's been done in the past to where I think we want to delineate how we will be doing that. And then I would like to bring forward, based on information in the past, filling a vacancy at the board level. And we do have policy on that, but it was something we faced earlier this past year. When, Colette, when you joined us, in fact. And we wanted to make sure we had that really specified. So I have some language to share with you. But just wanted to give you an update on what I'm doing back there in that little office every now and then. Another thing I wanted to share with you is that three citizens have declared, made a declaration of candidacy. And that will be held on the election in April. There will not be a primary election. Folks taking out paper include Terry McCloskey, Colette Sorgel, and Michelle Mootline. I probably said that a little bit choppy. And Michelle has joined us this evening. She's sitting in the back. So we look forward to that coming up. Today, I wanted to just reiterate with you. I sent a brief message out that Representative Tom Tiffany stopped in, and we had Mr. Coach do a tour of the Fab Lab. And Jen West was there with us. And it was very nice to showcase what the students are working on and how it's expanded. And he was very interested in what is happening. Personnel, I have a couple of hirings to report. Barbara Strand as a paraprofessional, and Devon Kirby for custodial and maintenance. And two resignations, Mark Klein as paraprofessional and Al West for custodial and maintenance. And that is my admin report.
All right, very good. Okay, thank you for that.
You bet.
Next, we move on to new business. Starting off with February meeting date or dates. Any new on that?
No, but our regular meeting would be on February 16th, 6:00 p.m. in the Three Lakes Boardroom. That would be my proposal unless there's any conflicts with the board members present.
I do have a conflict that I'll be in Florida, basking in the sun. But I would join through Zoom if that is possible. Or whatever, Microsoft, whatever you use.
Do we, is it easier to do the phone thing? Okay.
Just dial in?
Yes.
I can do that, too. I look better that way.
The phone thing, we've done that in quite a few meetings.
Okay.
And so that would be great. And is there a special number, Steve, that Colette would call into?
We would probably dial her number. She would need to give us whatever phone she's going to use.
Okay, all right. Very good. Okay. All right. So we're all set for February? Next, new business. We have considered requests by the junior class to hold prom at an alternate site, possibly Ketersky Barn on April 23rd, 2022. All right, ladies, what would you like to present?
Sure. So I'm one of the junior class advisors. So we are looking at hosting prom on the 23rd of April. And one of the venues that came to mind for these young ladies and a couple of the other people was the barn at Ketersky's. And I remember when I helped host a prom there for my oldest daughter and said how it was a really nice, nice place. And I enrolled. Has somebody contacted you, Mike?
Yes.
Somebody has contacted you? They were supposed to do all that?
Yep.
You did? So we're wondering if the board would grant approval to host the prom at the Ketersky Barn on April 23rd this year.
Okay. And just to share some information, and I'm going to abstain from the vote on this. We've had two prior proms at the site. And both entirely without incident. Everything went really well. I think all the students had a great time. And I was always very appreciative in how things were cleaned up after everything was all done and put back to how they were. And one of the things that was brought up in pass board meetings is the fact that our barn is not ADA accessible. So I just want to make sure that nobody's being excluded out of this.
If I could, I'll speak to that for a second. To our knowledge, there are no students at all within our student body right now that would be eligible to attend prom that have any needs that would require ADA accessibility. But in speaking with the student leaders, we, if that were changed between now and then, certainly we'd do what we can to make sure that nobody's excluded.
Okay.
But we appreciate the big forthright about, yeah, that's not the case.
Yeah.
And that shouldn't be a inhibiting factor for us at this point.
Okay, yeah, because it is an upstairs venue. So there is a flight of stairs that has to be climbed, so. And... So, I guess, at this point here, does anybody have any questions? Board members or junior class members here or myself?
Not for me.
I'd love to make a motion to approve the request that probably held at the Ketersky Barn on 4/23/22.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, hearing none. Call it to a vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All right. Any names? No? We have three. Okay, so we're, motion passes three to zero. And looking forward to seeing you guys there on the 23rd.
Yeah, thank you.
When we get closer, we can talk about the parking and such like that out there and how we can handle that and such. And so we look forward to it.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we go on to C, consider designating the number of regular education and special education spaces available for open enrollment applications for the 2022 through the 2023 school year.
Okay. Every January, this comes before the board. We have to set the space available seats for both our regular education and our special education upcoming school year. And in doing this, a pupil may not be denied open enrollment because the child is with a disability or based on a category of disability. However, we are allowed and need to look at our programming and our space requirements closely to know that we can meet the needs through the services and facilities that we have here. So this year, I have asked Mrs. Volk to look very carefully at our programming and our space allotments, as well as meeting with the administrative team, the principals. And we have determined two things. First of all, our administrative team has agreed that we are able to accept regular education students as open enrollment students. Although our numbers vary in different grade levels or areas, we do have the space and the staffing to accommodate new students wishing to come in. We have also looked at our special education program. And Mrs. Volk did a pretty careful and thorough study of where we're at because that's something that really can shift. And one thing Three Lakes School District has committed to is when we bring in a special ed student as an open enrollment student, we plan and we want to keep them through their career with us. So it's a commitment beyond the school year. It's through their educational career. And in looking at our capacity and our staffing, we have determined that we do not have adequate staffing or availability in space, seats and spaces for students at this point in time. So the recommendation would be that we would not accept open enrollment students for the, with special needs for the 2022, 2023 school year. And I would suggest and encourage, if you have more specific questions about it that maybe Carrie can answer, we'd be willing to do so.
All right. Questions, anyone? Just Carrie, a question in terms of space. Based on staffing levels, is that where we're currently at? Is it also a question on just physical space? Or is it more of a staffing?
I think it's probably a combination of both, but probably more so the staffing, student to staff ratio. And we're really, like, as I shared at the last board meeting, really looking at trying to close that gap among our students in regular ed and special ed. And in talking with Terry and my special ed staff, we just felt that we have a big task right now. So we're trying to move ahead with what we have right now.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, anyone prepared to make a motion?
I'll...
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to accept non-resident, open-enrolled, regular education student applications for the 2022, 2023 school year, provided they meet the established district criteria as there is adequate space in the current program. And, can I do and? Can I do two? Okay.
Yes.
And make a motion to not accept non-resident, open-enrolled, special education student applications for the 2022, 2023 school year as there is not adequate space available in the current program.
I will second. Close motions.
All right. So a motion by Stacy, second by Josh. Any other questions, considerations, comments? All right. A call to a vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard. Motion passes four to zero. All right, we're set. Next, we can go to consider approval of policy 345.63, which is the Veterans Diplomas/Honorary Diplomas. This is a new policy for us. The Veterans Diplomas, we've already had a little bit of history. But I guess we now put it into an official policy.
Right, that's exactly what we wanted to do, is go ahead and make it an official policy and outline the language for our citizens to understand the criteria. At the same point, we wanted to expand it to the honorary diploma for those individuals who, as we encapsulate, those who really represent the Blue Jay spirit. They've probably been part of the community. They would have graduated as a Three Lakes Blue Jay. However, unusual circumstances, a family hardship or conditions led to them not being able to normally graduate or graduate with their class at the time they normally would have. And this is something that is really gaining traction and attention really nationwide. And we do have just an extremely strong knit community and very supportive. Some of our most supportive community members, who are truly Blue Jays, maybe did not necessarily go through the graduation ceremony. So this is a answer to a request I was asked to check into earlier on this past year and really felt this was meeting a need for the benefit of everyone in the community and the district. So I bring this language forward to you. It's language that's developed through board docs and with consultation with our legal policy resource guide. And it's before you to review. And let me know where we're going with it.
Very good. Any questions? Okay. Anyone prepared to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to adopt policy 345.63, Veterans Diplomas/Honorary Diplomas as presented.
Second.
All right, motion by Josh, second by Stacy. Any further questions? Hearing none, I will call to vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed, none heard. Motion passes four to zero. And thank you for your research and work on that. Yeah. I think it'll serve the community in many ways.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to consider approval of the 2022 through 2023 school calendar.
This calendar, this draft calendar, I should say, has been developed by the administrative team and brought from my core team and my cabinet team that we meet as a bigger group. And then shared with the staff for their chance to look it over, provide feedback, and come to a somewhat of a consensus. Of course, there's always a few dates that, you know, some would like to see fall one way or another. But there was a lot of hours and reasoning put behind this calendar. You also received in your information next, the following year's calendar, but that's just for informational purposes. Tonight, we're only looking at the 2022, 2023 calendar for your consideration and approval. It's important to our parents and community, but especially our parents when they're looking down the road, the farther out we can get. With dates, the better it is for them. We've had a little bit of bump in the road with COVID and such where we've had to alter calendars. So our goal is to get not only this calendar, but next month, the following year's calendar out for purposes of planning.
All right, very good. This was something that was discussed with staff administration, and everybody is coming to an agreement on this.
Yes.
Everybody's good, huh?
Well, as good as a big group of people can be.
Consensus rule, right? All right.
Did you want me to go through any of the specifics of the calendar? Or you do have it in front of you, I know.
Any major changes?
No. No, there aren't any major changes other than we tried very much to fall within the line of, you know, the holiday dates, that's important. With Christmas falling over a weekend, that kind of, you know, puts a little crimp in there. It's, you can talk about banking them on the front or the back. But we really wanted to make the point in the March, as we had talked about last spring, trying to set a month, or, I mean, a week in a month. And we had come to the idea that probably that third week of March, if possible, be the spring break. So that's what we've tried to carry forth here. So folks start getting that into their mind. That's probably when Three Lakes School District will be having their break. We wanted to finish up in June on that Friday for as much as possible. You will see that there's Monday, the 5th, which is called the flex day within our calendar. There is three different choices of dates that staff pick one that they work by contract. And that can be either August 22nd or 26th or June 5th. Some people need it at the front end. Some people want it at the back end. So we like providing that flexibility to the teachers. They know best what they need.
All right. And we got various selected dates for the professional development. One on Monday, looks like a couple on Friday, which ends of the week or beginning of the week is better than middle of the week. So, okay. All right. Anyone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the proposed 2022 to 2023 school calendar as presented.
I'll second.
Any further questions? Hearing none, a call to a vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard. Motion passes four to zero. Next, we go on to consider approval of the RUL virtual academy partnership for 2022 through 2025.
Okay, so background. If you recall, last spring, we had done a very comprehensive review of our PEPP programming and online options that were out there. And I had brought to you that the Wisconsin Department of Instruction had very much tightened up the regulations as to what can be considered acceptable as curriculums offered outside of the building on online programming. And it has to be coursework that is taught by a licensed teacher. And it also has to be coursework that falls in alignment with what you're doing within your district. So should a child need to go in or out, they're not trying to start as, it's not as much of a hurdle starting over. So those are two considerations that we had to look at. And we joined with the RVA, the board supported us, doing the one-year affiliate. And it has gone very well. In fact, we had our meeting with them, what's called the annual meeting, just yesterday. So it's right hot off the press. And they have told us that our Three Lakes students have done very well. We have eight current students who are in the program full-time. And we anticipate a ninth student joining. We looked at our data, and they said to be very well informed in sharing this with your public as an option, you'd want to see right about a 2% of your student enrollment that would consider the RVA or an outside online program like that. And we fell, I believe, is at like at 1.63. So big kudos to Ryan Bach, because I think I told you then, but I'll remind you now. We talked, he talked extensively to every family considering open enrolling out or making different choices based on the changes on our programming. It's extremely important to us that regardless of what the choice our parents make for their families, their children, we want to stay connected. And in fact, you know, if we can keep that connection to school and serve their purposes, we want to keep that door open.
Right.
As well as Mr. Heckel, the board governor, president of RVA, has said, you will see some of your students who try it, and they will do well, but they will want to come back into school. And we've already, because of the social, or it's not quite what they thought. And I did a touch base with Ryan again this morning because we heard that yesterday. And we did get that same information. Although they're doing well, we might have some kids come back off RVA and come back into the district programming, which we consider to win either way. We have three choices to look at tonight. We can either end our relationship and be done, just say, no, that's not for us. We can maintain the relationship as an affiliate. That's what we did this year. And we pay quite a bit higher of a tuition. About $5,700 of that supports the RVA as a full-time program. If you go ahead and you make the commitment to the long-term, which is called an invested partnership, it cuts it in half. It's currently the average cost for a year, for a student who does full everything RVA through the district would be $2,800, which we feel is, you know, a real, it's a real substantial reduction in cost for the same services. And then there's the second portion that we have become involved in this year more aware of. It's called District Connect. And this is where through RVA, we can do that. And this is where through RVA, we can do that blended approach, which you had asked me about before, where we have students in seat here in the building, but might have other interests. We might have some accelerated interests where kids want to get some more opportunities. And that, those courses are very inexpensive for us, anywhere from $32 a course to some specific or more specialized are a little more expensive. But the cost savings is tremendous. The coursework is also offered to our teachers that we can go ahead. And if we have a teacher who wants to get involved in the content area for $150 for a area, that teacher has full access to all the content. It can be your online textbook, et cetera. I share this with you only because something that I think we've heard for many years, and I, as a former teacher, I remember living it. Trying to create good curriculum that supports what you want to teach in current takes hours and hours and hours and manpower. And this is content area, and we don't have anybody doing it yet. But it, should they be interested in it, the cost is very low, and it's already been vetted by the Wisconsin DPI. It's aligned to the standards. It meets the learning goals that they're looking for. It's properly aligned curriculum. So it's something that when we look to expand our offerings, it's right there for us to tap into. And they provide professional development at no cost, should we want to purchase that. So the more we got into it and the more we experienced it, I, and I've talked with the other administrators too, but I've talked a lot about it with Ryan, because he's kind of the go-to guy. I've been very pleased with the experience, and in fact, it exceeded what I had hoped to get out of it. I do not see a big spike increase in people wanting to do this. I think that looking at about eight to 10 students max per year going the full program is probably what we will see. I do think the blended programming is probably going to continue to grow with other options that we offer to our families and our students as they need them. So do you have questions? I know I gave you a lot of information about that. But, you know, originally, when we were looking at this, I, I was really on the fence, because I really don't want to commit district dollars to something that, you know, isn't going to turn out well for us. It has turned out well for us in other ways that they can provide other curriculums to us, like through Odyssey, where am I saying the correct one, Ryan? Where we used to purchase Odyssey wear seats as standalone seats. And I believe they were $1,000 a seat. And now through RVA, we have access to that. So it has been also giving us a cost savings that was a benefit that wasn't the driving force, but it has been a good benefit too. In discussing it with the administrative team and bringing it to you tonight, our recommendation would be that we go forward with becoming an invested member where our costs do significantly drop, and we keep developing that relationship with RVA as an online option, still remaining part of the Three Lakes School District. They are Three Lakes School District students, but giving them the families that option, should that be best for them.
And to become an invested member, what is required of us?
We sign a contract that we're going to stay with them for the next three years.
Okay. So it's a contractual relationship?
Yes, yes.
And no outside or added investment by the district, other than just the tuition for the student?
Right.
Okay. Okay. So they remain our student?
Yes.
Just they're open enrolled to the Virtual Academy?
Yes.
And?
And now, as an invested partner, we'll actually set it up that they're a school within our school. So all state reporting and things will be, you know, we will have them housed within. We're already talking back and forth. It's just, again, it's a better relationship for accountability of our students.
I did get a spin. They were representing, Rural Virtual Academy was represented at the state convention. And I got a chance to go into the booth there and, and talk to the administrator and principal. Principal actually is a former pastor of Three Lakes.
Sugar camper.
And so like the connection. And we've had, we've bought offerings for our students online in the past, other directions. Ryan, you've seen the content to this. Obviously, you think it's a better option?
This is all aligned to the standards, and there's DPI-certified instructors presenting, you know, presenting the information. So it really meets all the needs that, that we have, the high expectation and rigor. So it's an outstanding program, I completely support it.
Is, how much of it is actually a live teacher that they see on screen?
So it's 100% of the classes that they're taking. There's a teacher that's instructing. We get, or I get the correspondence from the instructor to the parents and the students. So I know exactly where they're at, grade-wise, if they're missing assignments, they need extra support. We've even opened up our libraries here in the elementary, junior high, high school, and even over in Sugar Camp, if students need to come in and get some extra support.
So are students coming into our building to do that?
They are allowed to, but we haven't had any students take advantage of that yet.
Okay.
In addition, by providing that service, we also get a $5,000 discount to our tuition, because we allow students to come into our building should they need assistance. And another facet that we're exploring further is they're very interested in if we would have any Three Lakes School District teachers who would be interested in becoming a partner and teaching for them. And it's, it's something that, you know, is worth looking at and entertaining, especially when you're looking at FTEs, and there's a specialty or a niche, like it could even be somebody who loves a specific course, content area. And it's difficult to find, they're having a hard time keeping up with the demand across the state. And if, if we would go into that agreement, of course, that would be a whole different conversation. We get a lot of cost benefits for that as well.
Okay. So the definite advantage for our district, I mean, because there are students that are going to be choosing this direction?
Correct.
You know, whether, I mean, it's just, that's just going to be the way it is. But there looks like there could be more opportunity for them to become involved with the school itself by having this partnership, should they choose that direction.
And a potential benefit that we haven't explored yet, but we made very aware the other good morning, is for kids who, so to speak, out to kick our coverage, like the accelerated student who all of a sudden is sitting in their senior year going, well, gee, I've taken all your courses, now what? We have Nicolay for a lot of our kids that take us up on Nicolay option, right? And get college credits. But there, I was looking at the menu of dual credit courses that are offered, you know, core elective that we could sign kids on for through this program that are really, really reasonable financially, super reasonable financially. So it, we haven't done that yet, but it's certainly a possibility. As we sign on as an invested member, we could certainly go there. And I'm thinking some of our kids might benefit from that. We talked that length last meeting about, we want to focus on a below basic. We can't forget about our kids who are functioning up here in advanced and proficient, you know, that maybe get past all the classes we've had already and, okay, keep challenging me, right?
Right.
This can be an option for that. I was impressed with the economic output that, very minimal cost to get kids involved in some of the courses that would have college credit tied to it as well. So that's a plus.
Any other questions?
I'm assuming that price is locked then for three years? Is there any annual increase of any sort there?
No, that's part of the benefit of looking at the long-term. And like I said, that is the average, but over 10 years, it has been between $2,800 and $3,100. Sure. Per student.
If something were to go awry, I mean, is there a early cancellation? I mean, is there an option?
You know, we didn't discuss that, but I'll tell you, I feel like this is such a genuine partnership and collaborator that they want to do right by us. And especially where we have to end with the principal of the school being a former alum. She's, she's, and we didn't, I did not know that when we first got involved. And apparently, this is something she had been hoping to do. The, the communication for, maybe it's our tie, has been outstanding. There's Ryan and I, or Justin, whoever, we can pick up the phone, we can call about a student, we can ask questions immediately, taken care of. So I feel very secure with this partnership.
I guess my only other question. Ryan, you guys were saying there's a couple, or a kid, or a couple of kids that might be wanting to come back into school. I mean, is there, did they give you feedback as to why? Is it more the social? Is it just not as good as they were expecting or?
Yeah, kind of a little bit of both. Mostly the coming back, missing their friends. It's a unique situation where they do spend part of their school year down in Florida. So looking at, that was a very obvious answer for them this year, where they could be in a different state, still get that, you know, still be connected. Where next year, they're looking at being up here longer and wanting to be part of the district, getting the students more involved with our co-curriculars and all the other electives that we offer.
Okay.
So that was, it'll be part of the conversation.
Okay. All right, anyone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue the partnership with Rural Virtual Academy as an invested member.
I will second.
All right, motion by Stacy, second by Josh. Any last questions? Hearing none, let's call to vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None heard, motion passes four zero. Thank you for everyone for your input and, yeah, another good option for our students. All right, next, we've got lots of co-curriculars here, huh? Consider approval of the co-ed cross-country co-op with Phelps for 2022 through 2023 and 2023 through 2024.
All right, this is a co-op that we've had for years. Haven't had a tremendous amount of participation from Phelps with it, but it doesn't hurt us divisional-wise or whatever. We're in the smallest division with that. So it's an opportunity for them, and they do have somebody. We are struggling with some numbers. We've been, they haven't had a boys' team for quite some time, but in cross-country, they can compete as an individual. So we're able to sustain that. Maybe if we get a couple of kids that want to run, we're able to put that team together sometime, so.
All right, supported by the coach as well?
Correct.
All right. Questions or someone ready to go for motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the co-ed cross-country co-op with Phelps for 2022 to 2023 and 2023 to 2024. Second.
All right, motion by Colette, second by Stacy. No further questions, call to vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None heard, motion passes four zero. Next, let's go to consider approval of the boys' fall soccer co-op with Phelps for 2022 through 2023 and 2023 through 2024.
All right, so this one, we have had some participation very recently and in the past with this. Again, it does not hurt us divisionally. We're in the smallest division for soccer you're ever going to find. So in fact, it wouldn't hurt to have a few more members. So supported by the coaches again, and this is a co-op that's been with us now for, this might be the fourth year.
Just a general question with the co-ops with Phelps. Is there any trends that you see, Charlie? I mean, were we seeing a growing number of students slot?
Well, Phelps is kind of really struggling right now. They're at pretty much about the lowest numbers that I've seen them for enrollment. So, you know, I think they're somewhere in the 24 to 28 kid range in the high school right now. So the participation we get, I think we get one in soccer. We had two try it, one stuck with it the whole year. But, you know, last year, I think we had three, and a couple years before that, we had, I think, four or five. So it kind of goes with their numbers, you know?
All right. Okay. Any other questions?
Charlie, I know you said it doesn't hurt us divisionally. Are we, I mean, is it anywhere where we're close or borderlining? Okay.
We're not even, I mean, we're, we're in the same division as Northland Pines. So we compete against Northland Pines, Cumberland, Barron's.
Sure.
We're going against some schools of 400-plus.
Sure.
We're probably one of seven schools in the state that has less than 200 enrollment in soccer. It's, it's pretty small.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve boys' fall soccer co-op with Phelps for 2022 and 2023 and the 2023-2024 season.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Stacy. Any further questions? Hearing none, let's go to vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None heard, motion passes four zero. Next, we go on to consider approval of the spring girls' soccer co-op with Phelps for 2022 through 2023 and 2023 through 2024.
So pretty much the same story as the boys' soccer. Again, we're competing with schools that are much larger, larger. We didn't have anyone from Phelps last year, but the year before that, we did have a couple. But unfortunately, that was the year where we didn't have the numbers to do it at all. So last year was the first year we actually had a girls' soccer program in about a couple of years, with COVID being one. And then the year before that was when we were struggling with numbers. So, so last year was the first, we're hoping, again, it's an opportunity. If we get one or two, it just helps bolster our teams just a little bit sometimes when they're on the sidelines with, you know, 12 to 14 girls, learn to have just one more soccer.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the spring girls' soccer co-op with Phelps for 2022 to 2023 and 2023 to 2024.
Second.
All right, motion by Stacy, second by Josh. Any further questions? All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None heard. Motion passes four zero. Next, we have a consider approval of baseball co-op with Phelps for 2022 through 2023 and 2023 through 2024.
So this is one of the co-ops that's probably had the most success. I think my first year I started here, Phelps had, I think they had seven or nine kids or eight kids. They had the majority of the team, we had like four or five. Since then, it's kind of shifted. I think last year, we had, I think there were two, okay? But our numbers are pretty high. We're actually looking at doing a complete JV schedule. So our numbers with Phelps are going to allow to have a JV and a varsity baseball team, which is an opportunity that will, getting those kids on the field will really bring some rewards later on down the road. So it's something that Tyler supports. It's not going to affect us divisionally, where there's four divisions in baseball. And again, it's, it's something, and those kids are also coming down here in youth programs. So they're pretty entrenched into the program itself.
I'll make a motion for approval of the basketball co-op, co-op with Phelps for 2022 to 2023 and 2023 to 2024. I'm sorry, what did I say? Close.
All right, so we're approving for the baseball co-op. And we have a motion on the floor by Colette.
Second.
Second by Stacy.
Quick question. Have you had, you haven't had any pushback from parents or anything, have you?
Not at all, okay. Not at all, okay. Like I said, some of these kids now have been coming down for a couple of years and are, you know, either good friends or into the program. They just had the youth baseball banquet and I did see, you know, some families from Phelps coming down and supporting that as well.
I would say largely the only pushback that we get, and it's in the past right now, is when the co-op bounces up a division in playoffs.
Right.
That's when we heard it a lot, you know? But that being said, that hasn't been the case.
In baseball, it doesn't.
No, 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 baseball doesn't. Softball hasn't for a little bit, been a big factor, so then you don't hear it as much.
All right, so we have a motion by Colette, second by Stacy. Any other questions? Call to vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Aye opposed, none heard, motion passes four zero. And lastly, we have consider approval of the girls' softball co-op with Phelps for 2022 through 2023 and 2023 through 2024.
Okay, so this is one that, in the past, that has had some pushback. However, we had some good news come out this early fall that even with the co-op now, we've bumped back into our original division. We're back in Division Five, where, where I wish we would have been for a long time. So looking at the signups, we're ordering new softball uniforms and I've talked to Jason Bertelli and it looks like we've got four girls signed up for uniforms and I was telling Jason, hey, so that you know, you're going to be on the hook for four uniforms when this comes around. And he's like, yep, no problem. He goes, that's what it sounds like, what's going to happen. So last year just we had two, I believe, for Phelps. So if that number continues to grow, I'm hoping our softball numbers will keep increasing like that. And, you know, if we can stay Division Five, it'll be a co-op that will be good, bolster our, bolster our numbers a little bit. You know, there were a couple of years where our numbers were down, where it wouldn't hurt me, just a couple more kids.
All right, very good. What's your ceiling number there for that division?
You know, I don't know what that is. It kind of floats around, but I'm thinking it's around.
It's not two, three, it's, I mean, it's not, you know, Phelps gets two more kids and?
No, I don't think so. No. Our enrollment is 143. I think, I'd have to look at what they were, they might be at as high as like 32 or 34. I think it was number like 190, 192, 195.
I was going to guess in the 190s.
Yeah, that's where it's traditionally has been. Basketball's a little bit less than that. Volleyball's been less than that. Volleyball's been like around 179. Basketball's have been floating from between 185 to 188. There's even been a situation where same school had one boys' team in Division Four and a girls' team in Division Five or vice versa. So. So it, I think it's going to be a good thing.
That's what we want. All right, any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the girls' softball co-op with Phelps for the 2022, 2023 and 2023, 2024 seasons.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Stacy. Last call for questions. Hearing none, call to vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, none heard, motion passes four zero. All right.
Thank you, I gotta run.
Thanks, Charlie.
Don't forget to come get me when you're ready.
I will, yeah, I have to.
All right, so next we go to consider the Three Lakes School District 4K full-time program option.
Okay, well, we have a wonderful team here to present tonight. I'm going to let them take over. I just want to say thank you to the hard work that not only Carrie did, but with Amy and then thank you, Kelly, thank you, Melinda. There's a, this is something that in our board goals, we've been looking to do and the timing is very right. And I look forward to them sharing information with you. Would you like us to back up? Are we going to use screens?
We're going to use the screen.
You are, okay.
Well, whatever way is easiest for you.
Boot us out.
You may want to bring your chair.
Yeah, right. Board members had a pretty pushy, didn't you?
So this presentation would have been in your board packet too. I don't know if you had a chance to go through it or not, but we're going to highlight some of the information within the presentation for you. Steve, you're being replaced.
She's a pro, by the way.
Can you guys see that okay, or do you want one of the?
I'm good.
I'm fine.
Okay, all right, so the moment we've all been waiting for, talking about 4K. I think we can switch here. So just a little bit of background. Currently, we have our 4K program both in Sugar Camp and in Three Lakes. It's in the mornings in Sugar Camp, not technically a half day, but eight to 10:45. And then in the afternoon here in Three Lakes, from about 12:30 to 12:45, whenever the kids arrive, to about three o'clock, end of the day. So both programs run five days a week, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. So we decided to put a survey together to figure out what the community, how we could better serve our students and families in the community. And I had those running from around parent teacher conferences up through, I don't know, Jen, when we pulled that, January, maybe sometime, or I?
It's still on the website.
Oh, it's still on the website, okay. Well, we stopped collecting data from it and compiled all that data to get a good idea of what our community is interested in. So these are the survey results here. We had close to 70 respondents, so it's a pretty good number. You can kind of see overall, you know, the most popular option is that five days a week, whether that's full day or half day. And this is kind of overall survey results and then I'm going to break it down, what 5K, 4K and 3K parents preferred.
So this is existing parents that have?
This data right here that you see on this slide is from everybody who filled out the survey. And then I'm going to break it down on the next slides to, with the different age groups. Okay, so this is the data from parents who have five-year-olds in kindergarten currently. You can tell it's, it's pretty similar to the overall data to that majority wanted five days a week, either full days or half days or the option for a full day or half day. And then this is data from 4K parents. Pretty similar information on that slide. And then I did try to collect as much data as I could from preschool parents. So I went to the story hours in Three Lakes and Sugar Camp. And then I tried to get to the playgroup at the Free Church, but they didn't have school that day and they canceled it. And then Christmas hit and then they weren't starting up again until after Christmas. So I was not able to go to one of those, but I did get the information to one of the parents and she handed out my survey, or the information to go to, to find the survey. So I did get almost 30 respondents, respondents or correspondence from this age group.
You did, wow, just for 3K.
Yep, yep, so it was quite a bit. So then I wanted to look at where do the majority of our kids spend the rest of their day when they're not in 4K? And you can kind of see the breakdown there. This is again, overall among all the age groups, which is pretty similar between daycare and home. And this is data from the five-year-old kindergarten parents where they spent the rest of their day when they were in 4K. So very similar there too. And then 4K, where are they, the other part of the day when they're not in 4K? So this was the largest group that had, you know, the, the other part of their day was in daycare. And then our three-year-old, or three-year-olds, the majority of their, the rest of their day would be spent either at daycare or at home. So I just, I compiled just some survey takeaways here. The highlights from the parents were that they would prefer, especially the Three Lakes parents, they would prefer 4K to be in the morning. The afternoon was really not conducive if you're going to have a half day or close to a half day program. Being in the afternoon is really not great with their schedules. And there were some comments saying that the days were really, really not half days, which we can see from that time slot, they really aren't half days. And their overall preference was for either five, half day option or full day option, five days a week. And you could tell from that data that a large number of our kids do spend the other part of their day in daycare. So, oh, we know that familiar face, huh? So before we go into other things, I just wanted both Melinda and Kelly to tell us a little bit about what happens in 4K currently. Oh, no, oh, yes. First, we're going to go to Amy and she's going to tell us about the literacy piece of it.
My name is Amy Johnson. I'm the district reading specialist and last year is my first year into the district. And we know phonemic awareness is a cornerstone of our literacy success. So one of the things that we introduced within our school district was a curriculum that developed, is especially designed for phonemic awareness for our K2 students. So we also wanted to bring in this cornerstone piece within our 4K curriculum. So we introduced all of our 4K through second grade teachers into the Hegarty phonemic awareness curriculum. And it's about 10 to 15 minutes of like brain games to help develop that phonemic awareness. And the earlier we do it, the more optimal it is for student success in literacy. So it takes about 10 minutes and aligns perfectly with our goals for phonemic awareness throughout our K through two programming. So that is one awesome piece of curriculum that we started last year. So this curriculum is exposure that they'll need for kindergarten and it really develops well in scaffolds into that. And like I mentioned before, it's about 10 to 15 minutes that our teachers are spending. And they're fun games. They're like brain games. So say the word oh, now add a g in front of it and the word is go. Or you might say the words rat and bat. Do they rhyme? Yes. So it's all just oral and hearing for them to be able to do some of those games throughout the day and the kids really like it. So then, this past year, we introduced the Happily Ever After curriculum and it sounds just as pleasant as it is. So it is three weeks, a three-week consistent unit that follows that same flow that our students kind of know. So it's based on traditional tales, so they go through 10 traditional tales and it really focuses on language and vocabulary. It has fine motor skills as well as direction following and speaking and listening. And the really nice thing about this is it has a take-home component. So if they're doing the story Little Red Hen, that, or the Little Red Riding Hood, sorry, Little Red Riding Hood, that same story that's being introduced throughout the unit is then sent home and the students are able to retell that story to their own family members. And it also gives a parent letter component, so some of the skills that they're working on within the classroom can then be reinforced at home as well. So it has a really nice flow. And again, that instruction is about 20, 25 minutes each day that they're able to be going through. The benefits of having a 4K all day would allow for additional literacy opportunities. So allowing for more teacher read-alouts. We know that exposure to reading and good literature and the vocabulary development occurs through teacher read-alouts or even that partnership with some buddies, right? So maybe their older siblings or some other different grade levels or even the possibility of having an animal coming in, which would be kind of nice as well. Also, it allows for extra support through interventionists or specialists if they need that, to be able to kind of butt in and help out with some scaffolding development in some small groups. Even though they have an opportunity to go to the library right now, maybe additional opportunities to go within to the district library and here at school to pick out some books. And even for teachers to allow some extra time to have additional literacy centers within the classroom. With a constraint of time, they may not have that opportunity for them to incorporate play within a literacy sense. So it gives that opportunity to do that.
Okay, now we'll take a look. Melinda will tell us a little bit about the structure of her 4K classroom in Three Lakes.
So I'm Melinda Stotz and this is my sixth year teaching 4K and early childhood spud here in the district. My schedule, as you'll see, is very different from Mrs. Grechbox's. My arrival time is wide because I get kids on multiple bands coming in. And so 12 to 12:40, sometimes 12:45 is our arrival. I do a free play, play-based learning at that time and then we head into calendar, which is a lot of math components. And then we do our language arts block, which is the Hegarty and Happily Ever After. Bathrooming takes a while in the 4K, so we do have quite a bit of time for bathrooming. We do a brain break in there as well and my students do go out for recess this year. They absolutely love it. And I like it because they're incorporated with those older students and the older students like helping get them ready and dipping up their coats. So I think that's super fun. We have a snack time and then a small math portion. And then, most importantly, our second step, which is our social skills at the end of the day, and then we go home. So it's a very quick afternoon. As Amy said, like, we could really use some more time for some literacy like centers and just stuff to put in. We have no, like, we have science sometimes, but there's no set science time. And there's stuff like that where we could build in and have more time. And it's really hard to do this in the afternoon because they are squirrely or tired and that afternoon time is really hard for the 4Kers.
Okay, thanks, Melinda. And Kelly?
Sure, Cam. Yeah, so my kids are a little more fresh in the morning, which is nice. They're just, I don't know, they're ready for their learning pretty much right away. So we also start with morning meeting, which is the calendar time Melinda talked about. It's like putting up the numbers today and counting in some patterns and stuff like that. And then we also do Happily Ever After. And then story, so on Wednesdays, I have the Denver Library come in. Candace is like the children's librarian over here. And so she does just about a half an hour of like activities with them. And that was in place when I started teaching here six years ago also. And she does a really good job. She's new this year and she does like stories with them, like word games and lots of like felt board type stuff and things like that. She does a really good job. And then we also have recess. In the winter, we don't go outside just because the like, the rest of the school is at recess later in the afternoon and there's not enough time for them to get dressed. There's just not. And so then we also do Hegarty, then we do small group centers. So that's when I do either my math or like science every once in a while. I kind of switch up like what I'm doing at that time every day. Sometimes it's more literacy, like letters and stuff like that. And then second step I do, we have snack time, play and then go home, so. Yeah.
That's my thoughts of stuff.
Yeah, amount of time. Yeah, we squeeze in there.
So I don't know if you can read this quote that well, but basically it's saying, we know that engaging students early on is the best thing. It's an investment, but definitely an investment that's worth spending now. Otherwise, down the road, we wind up putting all these other programs into place, trying to catch our kids up. So let's do it now instead of down the road. Just some general benefits of four-year-old kindergarten in general. You know, they have increased learning opportunities, like Amy was talking. They've already been exposed to some of that early literacy skills, some of those play-based learning skills, some social emotional learning. So having them come into the school setting is just a benefit in itself. But overall, we, we have had research show that kids who attend. But, um, overall, we, we have had research show that kids who, um, attend, attend 4K, there is a smaller, um, smaller chance that you're going to retain them, or they're going to end up in special education and need additional services down the road. Also put on there that Governor Tony Evers is already proposing this at a state level, so we're trying to be ahead of the game, like we always are here. So, um, however, there are other districts around our area who have already passed and are doing full-day 4K already. So additional benefits from 4K all day is, in, this is in addition to what Amy's already identifying, um, beyond additional literacy benefits. But we talked, Melinda and I talked about increased opportunities for students in early childhood to have the chance to interact with typically developing peers and increase those learning opportunities. Just engaging students at an earlier age, increasing our participation in four-year-old kindergarten and kindergarten. Once you make those connections and engage our kids, then we, you know, they're here, they're our students. And additional opportunities to educate the whole child, looking at not only literacy, but math, social-emotional, all of those pieces tied in. And I added the last one there, like future wraparound care for students, maybe even looking down the road of looking at some after-school and before-school options for students. So looking forward, where do we go from here? So Melinda and Kelly just wanted to give a brief overview of what that full day might look like in 4K if we were to go to a full day.
So as you can see, it would be the same, which would be nice for us. Uh, we'd start out with our morning meeting and calendar, just as we do now, and then right away go into the language arts block of Happily Ever After and Hegarty, getting that done in the morning when their attention is at its peak. Have a special such as P.E., art, music, library, something like that, something our students currently don't get. The 4K in Three Lakes does get music in the month of December so that we can prepare for the Christmas concert, but that's it. Uh, we would have math, a set math time, which we could look into, um, having the same math program. Right now, we just supplement on our own. And then having lunch and recess, providing them with a lunch here at school, ensuring that we would also be able to provide them with breakfast here at school.
Um, and then after lunch, we'd have a rest time, um, and move into centers, which is one we would like to be able to do that, like, extra, we can't fit it in in the morning stuff, um, math, more literacy, especially like letters and sounds. Um, and then still keep our second step afterwards, um, recess, both schools do have an afternoon recess, there are different times, but, um, we fit that in. And then a snack, playtime, and go home again. So the afternoon's a little less heavy on the academics just because they're, they're kinda done.
And the main thing we wanna point out is that, um, Kelly and I both do eighty-seven point five hours of outreach for our parents, providing them with different activities that they can do with their child or educating them on our programs. We could provide more of that in class, um, allowing more participation in class, and allowing us to have less hours outside of the school day for us to prepare these events and stuff.
Yeah, and I think it's, you're looking at just another way to engage parents and families within the, the school environment.
Yep.
Because right now, you know, your participation varies.
Yeah, it's quite low right now for our outreach events. We had one last week, and we had two families show up. I, I have sixteen, and you have...
I have six.
So it was very low participation, where this would hopefully increase that and get our parents more on board of what we need to be working with our students at this age.
Okay, so looking at a few options for next year. Looking at full day, offering full-day programming in both buildings, where the students would say, take the same transportation to and from school. But then, listening to our families through our survey results, and offer still a half-day option for those parents who felt like, "I still would like to have my 4K student only at school half-day." And then that option, we felt would be best in the morning, again, listening to our survey results and taking that into consideration. But then also, if parents decided that half-day option, offering an option around semester time, say, "Hey, you can switch to full day now if that's what you so choose." And then, you know, like, looking as they went through their day and their structure, also working with DPI. The DPI website has a lot of good information for developmentally appropriate programming for students this age, where we know it still needs to be very play-based while you incorporate some of those other, um, pre-academic skills in there as well. What we would like to do is have a 4K open house. We tentatively picked a day to do that, and it's on one of our, um, our last parent-teacher conference evening. So having that open house in Three Lakes and in Sugar Camp, and having a bunch of different activities, stations set up for our parents to provide them not only to learn about our 4K program, but other literacy resources, um, speech and language resources, things in the community that are available for that age group. Find out about more of our child information, and then have, um, questionnaires for parents to fill out. Right now, what we do in our child find screenings, we have all parents fill out that ages and stages questionnaire, both the general development and social-emotional one. So kind of doing, uh, an overall questionnaire for all of our incoming 4K students, and then an opportunity at that time to fill out an op, or enrollment paperwork and open enrollment paperwork. So, um, either way, we're gonna have an open house for 4K, so we can invite our families and students in to learn a little bit more about it. So this is, I thought this was an effective quote for what we're talking about right now. And just like as Terry mentioned before, this ties directly with one of our, our district goals of trying to have that, um, birth-to-five engagement strategy, or just, you know, to increase our participation and enrollment in our schools. Does anybody have any questions for any of us?
Hopefully some of this doesn't get old, but, um, being a parent who's got kids just out of this or coming into this level, it really helps to drive because a lot of this stuff is really fresh in my head. Part of the presentation you brought up here, um, brought up a couple of new ones. As far as the switching goes, and this is, this is on the minor, would you be, would it be open to switch at quarters rather than semester? Because at this age, you know, it's hard to tell.
Yeah.
So I think if you, you would really, you could miss an opportunity if you have, make a kid wait till semester after three weeks.
Right. I don't think that's necessarily set in, set in stone for us. We just felt like we had to have something out there so a student wasn't making a choice every day.
Yeah, you might, yeah, definitely set a, set a limit, you know, as far as, you know, okay, but...
Yeah, and I think that's up for discussion too.
For, i-if we were to go to optional full day, is there the opportunity to flip-flop some of the afternoon and morning activities so that those kids who might do the optional half-day can get a little bit of that extra?
I would say consistency is really a big key.
For that extra? And routines?
Routines. A big goal of ours is just learning a classroom routine, so I would probably keep it the same.
Okay.
And like I said, afternoons don't go very well for academics, so I get what you're saying, but it's hard.
Trying to remember what... Can you go back, can you go back to that slide where you're...
Center.
The full day?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Centers and social.
Yeah, what was the second step stuff again?
That's our social-emotional curriculum, so it teaches our students about like their different emotions, how to express emotions.
Okay.
And where that's really important at that age. You know, that if, if students aren't in a right mindset socially, emotionally, the academics are not going to come. So at this age, it's really, really important to hit on that.
Also something that can be taught at home, so not a huge deal if they don't get it in school.
Sometimes I've seen staff members like intervene during those center times where if they, students are playing and they arise to a situation, they're maybe arguing over someone's legos or something like that, the teacher is able to go ahead and problem-solve with them and give them those options and opportunities to kind of work things out and prompt them and support them with the things that they need based upon maybe what they have talked about in that social-emotional curriculum.
Those teachable moments.
Teachable moments, yep.
Okay. One of my biggest questions, and Stacy and Collette, like, jump in wherever you want. Is this going to be a single teacher, or is there gonna be an aide in the class? Because there's a lot of, I mean, three is tough at home for me sometimes, let alone sixteen, or, you know, even six. I mean, you know, teacher has to step away for a second to, whatever it might be, you know, then you get, you know, how's that, how was that envisioned?
I think, I mean, that's a really good question. From my past experiences, having a full-day 4K in my previous district, the, um, 4K staff member did have a paraprofessional within that classroom. Um, she didn't necessarily need her all day, like during rest time, um, but that's when they would, I think, schedule their, their different lunches. They'd, you know, switch off for that. I think it's probably really gonna depend a lot on the enrollment numbers. But I, you know, another set of hands in there is, is very helpful.
It's nice that it's not need, like, I've had classes of twenty-four, twenty-seven, like snack time, I can do on my own. It's not a big deal, but obviously, language arts, you want another person in there. So I think Carrie would work around the schedule to get an aide when needed.
Yeah, so I, it's probably not a clear answer, but I think it, it depends on, um, what we have for upcoming students.
And would transportation still be, would they, like, if they only came a half-day, would they would get the van ride home?
Well, we were thinking that we would do transportation to school, but if the parents chose, then they would, you know, pick up or transport. And I think that would all depend on, on numbers too.
Yep.
I think it's, it's kind of uncharted territory for us right now, so we're not quite sure what, what we're gonna get.
Well, I know from talking with many people in the community, this is gonna be a real hot topic and positively, and I think we'll see, I mean, I know we've lost some students this year.
Right.
Because they couldn't do the half-days.
Right, right.
So I know that it's gonna be very positive, and I'm super jealous that I missed this.
Maybe I'll get another baby, just kidding.
You know, and I think that is one of our barriers for some of our families. They, they can't find childcare, so they chose to go to Rhinlander for full-day kindergarten. Or I know Melinda had a couple open enrollment Eagle River for this year because it was all day. And it's, it's really hard for working parents.
You hitting on the uncharted territory, that's, that's kind of a concern, you know, in my mind, and that's really where the aide question comes in. And if we're gonna do this, we need to make sure it's a quality.
Absolutely.
A quality option. I mean, like even prep time for the teachers. I mean, it's a lot of, you know, cut and glue and glitter and, you know, whatever that might be a little bit more, you know, probably much more involved prep time than, you know, the upper-level classes. And there again, that brings up my, my aide question, and, you know, where are they gonna get enough prep time? And do you guys feel that you'd get enough prep time, or where you might get it?
Honestly, I feel like I'd get more prep time here. I have Friday morning prep, so every time we have it in service or something, I don't have a prep. So this would at least build in a prep for me every day.
By us incorporating the specials in...
And the rest time, we could prep a lot during rest time.
Yeah, if they had a special every day type of, yeah.
We'd need a lunch at some point.
Oh, yeah, that's true. We could eat with them.
Well, they go, they go to recess.
And I shouldn't say it's completely uncharted territory because there are other districts already doing full-day 4K, but, you know, newer to us.
New for us.
Yes, yeah.
Can I add a couple things?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm always thinking money and coverage. Whether our students are here for a half a day or full day, it's still funded at the same rate by the state, it's not fully funded, not unless there would be, uh, legislation that changes that. I think the investment far outweighs the, the cost initially that we would be putting forward. I would not commit to saying we're going to hire a full-time, all-day aide for each class. I think pieces and parts of people could probably be doing that, or we say, "Okay, this is what we see as the need. We need this particular para at this time for literacy, et cetera," where their strengths are very different skills sometimes for lunch and nap and, and recess than working with our literacy. I think it's extremely important, remember, this, this is still play-based. It is extremely important that we don't forget their four-year-olds, like I said. My car payments are longer than they are in age at forty-eight months. You know, they are little people, and the, the investment in, in bringing them up from the beginning and connecting to our district is just huge for our families in our community and for where we want to go. It will show in our literacy and our math down the road, but I wanna remember that these are little people. They are, are little creatures that we wanna invest in, and I'm just going to throw out there, the timing is ideal because S R three money is, I, very much something that's appropriately to earmark for a new program. We're not going to have this opportunity again, and Josh makes a good point, uncharted territory, you know? How much is it gonna cost? What is it gonna look like in staffing? Well, we have a little bit of, um, it's, it's building literacy and math skills and engaging kids in school and keeping them in school. We have this funding that can support, not fully, but it's going to help bring in that extra money that we would need to support these services. So I put that out there to you because in other years, it could have been a much bigger financial impact on the district than I see going forward next year with this.
I can say that I am super excited about all the time and effort that you guys have put into this. I think this is going to be, uh, a big, uh, opportunity for our district, for our district families to, uh, be involved in a, in a high-quality program. And we've talked about how to make this happen, and I really appreciate, um, this taking root. A couple of questions I've got, uh, the curriculum that you mentioned, the phonetics, uh, Hegarty, and there was...
Happily Ever After.
And how long have we been using some of those?
Hegarty, this is our second year. And, um, from the feedback that I've gotten through teachers, and Melinda, maybe you can kind of, and, um, Kelly, you can maybe share with some of your scoring, from your screening scores. But what I can hear from the feedback from the kindergarten teachers is that these students, even though this is their first year of exposure in 4K, well, last year is their first year of exposure, but coming into kindergarten this year, the kids, it was easier to pick up on. So maybe that ten-to-fifteen-minute routine that would have taken them in the kindergarten is now really quick. They know some of the hand motions, and they're feeling more confident. And it's kind of showing up in their screening scores that we do in our universal screening three times a year. And maybe you can kind of speak onto some of your PALS data?
Yeah, so we actually just finished our PALS, and, um, our beginning sound awareness is the highest it's ever been. And I really do think it's because of this phonemic awareness curriculum, so that's really good to see.
Josh, you asked a question that I was gonna ask the second step because I had no idea what that was. And I was really happy to hear, it looks like it's developing more of the social-emotional skills, emotional intelligence of our students. Totally agree that that needs to be developed at that age to set the stage for learning further on. And, uh, and I like the fact that teaching at, at the moment, you know, because things are gonna happen, right? A little chaos here and there, which sometimes you could use that for an advantage. Are there other opportunities to, to work on those social-emotional skills other than the, the second step? And, you know, all right, well, we've got a little discussion going on, we gotta take care of this. Is there any other parts of that social-emotional learning that happens in some of the other areas that you're connecting the students with?
We do, I use a different program right now, um... Um, we do, I use a different program right now, um, like I supplement with it too. It's just, it's slightly different than second step. It's actually like puppet-based, I mean, second step is as well, but it's two little cats and they think it's really cute. And it's just like, takes literally like three minutes to do and they just love it cause like Tabby Cat and Tom Cat talk to each other. And so like I throw that in there just because then it's like a, like a story type of like additional little, like I said, it takes three minutes and they love it with the little cats. So I do that, but I guess also you're probably wondering like in terms of like math or literacy, is that what you mean, like tying it in there?
Some of the other things that you introduced, you know, like your math.
Yeah.
I think it's tied in all around throughout the day.
Yeah.
Cause the first week is all about learning like how to come to the carpet and just, it's all about skills that you're gonna need at school. And then we go into like more depth of, I'm feeling angry, what do I do now? And why is my body feeling like this?
It's, yeah, it's not just at playtime, you know, it's like immersed throughout the time.
All the time, yeah. And the program does a really good job of giving examples throughout the day and even into home life rather than just like throwing a random example of play. So like our current one right now is talking about, um, how, it's a, it's a home-based one. So like the brother is not being nice to the sister and they have different opinions. So we do get into a lot of different topics that are not just school-based, which I think is great.
I think to piggyback off your idea with um other activities that you may do, she had mentioned something about brain breaks. And sometimes those brain breaks incorporate strategies like meditation or yoga. So giving kids the other opportunities that they could practice some of those strategies that may not be so much scripted, but just to give them opportunities like, oh yes, I can take a couple of deep breaths and practice that and realize, yep, this is a strategy I can do at home as well. So those are some other pieces too that may not be so much tied to a curriculum per se, but can be other activities that are incorporated to teach those moments as well.
Excellent. And then also on the arts, um, you mentioned that we didn't have the opportunities at the Sure Camp level. Uh, that's what the Three Lakes students did in the past. Um, and is that gonna be expand more than just the music as far as arts?
Yeah, they'll get art, gym, music, and we have library already, but yeah.
Okay.
Bye Jen.
Bye, yeah.
We should grow our growth motor and fine motor skills too, so looking at a whole student.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, they're gonna play games and stuff. Like they don't know how, some of them don't know how to play games yet, like how to take turns.
And one thing to go back to, um, with our happily ever after curriculum, that's our, we are pilot, or not, I shouldn't say pilot, we invested into it this year. This is our first year. So we may be finding some things like some additional learning time is needed for alphabets, letters or um going through and doing some of those fine motor skills with handwriting that we're just uncovering right now. So um as we go through it, you know, we can reflect back at the end of the year like, okay, these are additional opportunities. We can now incorporate within our center base during the afternoon that we need to make sure we hit. But since it's unknown at this, I mean, it's, we know what the curriculum is, but as we're developing it ourselves and time-wise and real time, like, ooh, I see this is what's happening, you know, we may need a little bit more emphasis on this.
And then the last thing, I put my marketing hat on.
Well, Jen's been involved.
How are we gonna get this information out to the district and let parents know?
So I've been sitting in with meetings with Carrie already and planning some things too, but I have a laundry list. So we've started talking about, you know, utilizing Terry's Terry Talks and doing a video introing it and portions on the website and what all these, you know, kind of checklist of running through it all, but I think that it's gonna be, there's, there's a laundry list. But I, my excitement behind this, I really feel like what Carrie kind of touched on that as, this is a high recruitment area too. Cause once, you know, we introduce students and families to our district, then we can maintain them. So this is like this really important entry point, so I'm taking that seriously too as I think about it.
Awesome. Okay.
Jen's already planning road trips today.
I do have a comment on the, the term child find. Is there another name for that?
That's just what they call it at the state level, yes.
To me, it, it sounds.
Like an Amber Alert?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's like, it's not warm and fuzzy, it's not, it's like, we're looking for you.
Well, in basically, that, that is our obligation as a district to find.
I, I get that, but.
And that's, that's just the term.
Marketing, yeah.
Yeah. I know Jen's already, can we call something else?
That name always like.
It's a very internal name, so it's like different layers.
Find something. I wanna be part of this, you know?
Well, I can just tell you, Mike, that the term or the, you know, for child find hasn't scared people off to come to our screenings. Right, I mean, we're growing, yes.
Okay, still well.
We've had a lot, so it's been a good thing. And I think people in other districts, they know what that means because if they've been in another district, then they're aware of child finding.
I, I get that, yeah, but.
Still don't have to like it, yeah.
There's gotta be a better name for it, so. Good stuff.
I got a couple more questions if I can. You guys talking about these extras for the kids, you know, art and music and, and that's great. We've already talked about that our school is kind of lacking in those options for kids. Can our staff handle this?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other thing would be space. You know, we've also discussed Sugar Camp, you know, being limited on space already. I know the setup in Three Lakes is better than, much better than Sugar Camps.
We do have space in both buildings. It would be the current rooms that we have. We might look at, and I haven't gotten into talking about facilities with Todd and Steve. Steve and I have talked that we do definitely have room in this building. In Sugar Camp, I look at um current four K room, um, a wish, not a need at this point, would be to expand to have at some point in bathroom facilities in the classroom. I mean, there is a rather close area, but potty time takes a lot of time when you're talking with four-year-olds. And I think that's something, that's a rather doable facility upgrade for a minimal cost. Uh, if you recall, Sugar Camp between the, the kindergarten and the four K room now, there's like what used to be called the cloak room. That's what it was called when that was a third grade room. That's already there and there is a bathroom on the other side. So it wouldn't be too far of a stretch. That does not have to happen prior to this programming going into place. But I do think it's a very important consideration that we should have.
One last question for myself. Parents that have three-year-olds. And they're, and they ask, you know, what, what type of options do we have, will we have? What are your thoughts moving forward on that?
For a three-year-old programming?
Three-year-old.
Well, I think that's why I included on that one slide about additional wraparound programming, maybe expanding into three-year-old.
Okay.
Down the road.
Thinking about it. All right. All right.
All right, one last, final, final. Now, from my, a couple of my kids having gone to daycare, I kind of know this because numbers were bumped up against. How are schools different from daycares in that, like for this age group, for four K, you could have thirteen kids to one adult? How are schools different? Or are they even different?
As far as just pure numbers?
Yes.
Okay.
So daycares have a different set of standards compared to the school districts. So because we have a public education setting, we are not held to the, I think it's like STARS is what the daycares are called. Um, I don't think we have that same requirement if I recall correctly. Cause I know like the little ones, it's like six to one and then.
I, yeah, I think it depends on age level, whether or not it's a certified daycare. I think there's a lot of things that factor in.
Sure. Well, and again, that just gets into a staffing, you know, aide question for me. It's, you know, just to help move the day along and help with those extra activities and, you know, help, you know, you might be helping group over here and this couple over here might be having a breakdown and you gotta help this, you know, these couple. You know, that sort of thing, so. Again, it's just a concern of, if we're gonna do this, let's do it well.
Right, right. And I think that was Terry's comment too. If we're gonna do it, we want to make sure we're doing it well.
Very good. Thank you all very much. All right, next we go to. Well, let's see, do we need to?
I'd like a motion.
We need a motion.
We need a motion.
We do, yeah. You can't just all sit there agreeing with it, right?
So we would make a motion that the Three Lakes School District have four K full-time program options and um half-day options. Is that where we're?
At both?
Yeah. That was my motion.
Do you wanna restate that or do you want Carrie to restate it for us? She's very good at words.
Sure, what did you, what did, what did I say?
Motion by Soragul that the Three Lakes School District have four K full-time program and half-day options.
Yes, that's what I said.
A second.
Okay, motion by Colette, second by Stacy. Anything left to ask?
I guess as far as some of these questions that are up in the air, I mean, how do these, how do these get addressed? And some answers to some of these could lead to a different thought.
Yeah, they get addressed by, first of all, we have to know the number of students in seats. We have to know if we have six or eight, it's a very different story than if we have twenty-four, as Melinda offered. Although we don't stand, we don't have to meet the obligation of like the STARS rating system in a daycare or some of the federal programs, we certainly wouldn't want to plan this without having adequate staffing. I do believe that we have room within our schedule. I'm not going to mislead you and say we wouldn't have to hire additional support staff. Or even if we have big numbers in the programming, if we see a surge come in, we, I think as a district, have always been very cognizant of we are going to have the staffing adequate to meet the needs of the students. So, uh, but with students come additional funding too, so that helps offset that. I think we'll have a really good idea towards late spring, what our enrollment will be. And I can give you a much better answer to that and we can discuss future staffing. Right now, my goal is to go forward with the program and we have in the seats already, including our, our specialist staff and such and our teachers here, with the possibility of having to uh look at our special ed programming in early childhood. Because Melinda is our early childhood teacher at this point. It could be another portion of a caseload already in place, which I'm not recommending and or encouraging that. I'm just saying it could be, or it could be a hire for those services. But we really do need to see what numbers we're looking at a little bit further down the line. Your point of if we're going to do this, we do it right, we are, it's not a one-year, let's see what happens and we're done. We have to start this program and build it as part of the culture.
I think one of the things that will work in our favor with doing a four K open house and providing those enrollment forms is that we're going to have a number earlier on.
Yeah.
Because I know Nikki struggles with that every summer, coming in in July and August and enrolling. And we never, we never know how many kids are gonna be in four K.
And I should say, when you asked about the marketing part, this is what happens, like it's gonna happen for this open house. So a lot of the promotion and all of the educating of what we're doing is gonna be very quick here. So we're not, I meant, you know, yes, we have to tell people yearly what's happening, but there's gonna be a big chunk of that work being done.
Our first blast is going on Monday afternoon, Tuesday, I believe. We've already got a schedule, so I was told.
So we're, we're approving this.
I said, put it on the calendar, but not until the board meeting says okay. We're ready to go though.
And you'll, you'll like this too, they're, they're making T-shirts for them. The kids that they come in that say future Vujay out of them.
I'm so jealous.
You'll hear him.
So my only, my only concerns with this and that I, and I trust that it will be done right is that we provide plenty of help for these, for these teachers.
Yes.
They're going to have a lot. It will be more on their plate. We appreciate you guys and how much work you guys put into the kids already. I just wanna make sure that, that we don't have parents saying, you know, I feel like my kid's getting lost or.
Understood.
Not getting enough.
It's a very great point, yeah.
You know, can I say something? Just from a fiscal perspective, this is a good time because you're gonna be going to referendum. What I would be doing is if you need a little extra money to make it an extra program, add a little bit onto the referendum. It's well worth it. Very well worth it.
Good point. Any others? Where's that? All those in favor of the motion signified by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard, now motion passes four zero. Congratulations, well done. Yeah, good stuff. Do you have to fly?
Uh, yep, if we can take a five-minute recess.
We can do that. All right, halftime show. All right, hopefully everybody enjoyed our halftime show. We are now ready to start back on our agenda. And we have the twenty twenty-two W A S B, W A S D A, W A S B O State Convention Report. Who would like to start?
Well, I sat through all the motions and the, um, the different, um, things that they were trying to update. And it was one of the longest afternoons of my life. The, the, um, many of the points that were brought up were relevant, but still got turned down being changed. So we did stay with the original proposal on almost every one of the ten, um, different things that we brought to the board. But it was, it was very interesting to watch the interaction and watch the passion. And um, listen to the word smithing and how people took similar words. Like, um, uh, when they, they talked about play, what kind of play, and they had different levels of play. And it's like, wow, it was, it was really intense at times, but I, I did learn a lot and I think it was a good experience to sit through.
Yeah, yeah, the delegate assembly is, uh, it's, it's definitely something that, uh, is, is definitely interesting. And then, uh, and a lot of those things that go on then to become potential legislation.
Yes, and the, the other interesting part was their internet really sucked. I mean, it was bad. We were voting online, seven out of the ten motions, we lost the Zoom connection and they had to come back. And this was in a big city with a lot of bandwidth, so it was interesting.
Yeah. All right, anything else?
Let me go next. Um, I'm just thankful, you know, it was, on the, this is my second year going, um, second time going. And, um, it was very, um, very educational for me being newer, still feeling very new to the board. And it's still, was just, it's just neat to have that networking time. Went to a lot of different sessions, got a lot of different information and education for myself. My, one of my favorite highlights, one of my highlights was actually one of the general sessions. So they had, they have three general sessions and they have like, um, different schools bring their musical groups. And there was a wire choir and it was. And there was a wire choir and it was, oh my gosh, I get goosebumps just talking about it. They were playing the violins and the cellos, but they were dancing and choreographing while they're playing. I'm like, what? I mean, it was in, oh my gosh, it was like the best. I was, it was really cool.
I was jealous. There was nothing like that when I was in school.
Gosh, it was just, and it was, and then there were so many kids involved. I was just like, that is amazing. So, that was really, really cool. So, they, you know, there's a lot of different things that, that you get to see and hear, and I'm just thankful that I, I had the opportunity to go and, you know, it was not easy leaving my kids. This year was very hard for some reason. Kaylin was having very crazy anxiety with me being gone, so it was very hard emotionally for me to go, but I'm glad that I did, and it was a great experience. And I appreciate the time that I was able to spend with these guys too. It's just nice to have some time to, to network and, and talk and catch up on things. So, that was fun too. So, thanks for letting me go.
All right. Terry?
Sure. I designated Stacy as the person I was gonna follow, so I didn't get lost. So, that we had a few times where we had to rethink our course, but we did it. And never had to go outside in that cold air. So, it was, I thought it was actually a very well-done convention. A little earlier on, I was concerned because there was several people that I knew who had pulled out because of staffing issues or at-home concerns for their districts. And some of the vendors canceled, and there was some cancellations with the meals and, and the presentations. But the, the programming was done very well. I got a lot out of it. I, I, of course, tried to hit the legal and keep up with that. That's always first and foremost in my mind. But one of the speakers, his name is Robbie, who's the, who's the thing? I wouldn't say it wrong. Yeah, who's this thing? Robbie. He was excellent, and he really spoke to what I think we're trying to do here in Three Lakes, that it's important to remember our kids who are college-bound high flyers, but the kids who are really looking to go out of the school experience here into the workforce, they're just as high flyers. And he really focused on, do they have a business plan? Which really struck a note with both of us, because there are some kids from the time they're 12 years old, they've got a business plan, they've got a business mind, and they know how they're going to achieve it. And Robbie actually talked a lot about, you know, how you work with that in the schools to help the kids who might have a different path that's not quite as traditional as college-bound or, or so. And he was an interesting character, because he's actually a cousin of the Gandhi generation, you know, that that was, that was his aunt in his family. And he was a guitar player for Hanson Mba. And his, he talked about how his entire family was all education, education, law, business, bankers, and this was the path he charted. And low and behold, he came to it a different way, because he was not college-bound. But he really capitalized on what's the most important, and he said it comes down to four concentrations. And actually, there's an article in our school news about him this week. And he said, if he can keep in mind that you inspire the curiosity, recognize and nurture talent, provoke the critical thinking, and you foster communication, which is what was key in his message, genuine communication with your students and what they want to do and aspire to be, they will go where they want to go. So, I thought he was a very nice highlight, and it kinda brought me back to everything that we're doing here and the importance of why we're doing it. So.
And meeting the child where they are.
Where they are.
And trying to help figure that out, 'cause I, I, I felt like he was talking to a lot of kids who really have no clue. And that hopefully is what we're trying to do, is give them a clue as to what they're good at, what they can be strong at to move forward. So, I thought his message was right on cue.
Yeah. And I felt we were right in line with it, that we're, we're seeing all of our learners, not just a small group of learners. We see them all. So.
Very good. I had a great convention. It was, the theme this year was Forward Together for our students. And I saw a lot of sessions that were geared toward facility improvement and facility plan, comprehensive plans for your facility maintenance, and I sat on two of those and basically looked at trying to come up together with a comprehensive facility plan. It looks at not only, you know, the nuts and bolts of what drives the operation, but also the learning environments for our students. You know, that, there is an evolution there that's happening, even the furniture that is within the classrooms. And, you know, and the need for updating those learning environments, be flexible. And, and also reducing operational costs. So, there's a number of things that, that comprehensive facility plan can look at. And that led into another session that I sat in. I sat in three sessions of Classroom of the Future, which was way cool. These were dreamers. There was an architect, there was a contractor, a general contractor that specialized in, in educational construction. There was also a furniture representative that specialized in school furniture for classrooms and such, and an energy expert. So, these four people sat in on this two-year project and trying to develop Classroom of the Future. And they had prototypes there that you could actually, Stacy was in on one of the sessions with me, and some very interesting and stimulating discussions were going on in those classrooms. And, you know, the talk about trying to have more of an open environment and stuff like that. But at the same time, how do you be safe? How do you maintain a building where, you know, all of our students now and staff and everyone are in these lockdown drills and stuff like that? And, you know, how does that work when you have classrooms that have all kinds of windows and glass and such like that, movable walls? And so, you know, a lot of this stuff is, as I mentioned before, it's dreaming, but it's also setting the stage for future discussions and such like that. And so, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna be looking at here, I think in the near future, coming up with a comprehensive facility plan. You know, I spoke to a couple of vendors, Terry did as well, I'm sure Stacy and Colette. There's a lot of representation in the exhibit halls of people that have these services. And so, got a chance to sit down and talk to several of them in, in, in deep discussion on what they can offer our district and, and in what kind of, what does the process look like? So, I think that's something that we'll have to look at in the near future here to develop some kind of a plan and start making those discussions and, and sitting down and what do we wanna do for our students in terms of learning environment? And what are the things that we need to change, you know, for like our HVAC system? We made some improvements, but there are things that can take us to the next level. Quality of air is a big mover for a lot of, some of that discussion that was in the Classroom of the Future. So, I was very thrilled to see the amount of research and work that's been done in that, and I think it's gonna help us in the future. Sat in another one where it was reinvigorated STEAM experience, where, you know, it used to be STEM, now it's STEAM, because it includes the arts integrated into curriculum. And what some of the districts have done to incorporate more students into this path, into this, you know, we've got our Fab Lab here, where we've integrated our design, our engineering process down into our lower curriculum, our lower grades and integrate into curriculum. And what some of the other districts have done to bolster that and increase more enrollment once they reach the junior high and high school level. And last one I sat in was, was really good and opened my eyes to, it was called Growing Your Own Teacher Pool. And some of the new things that are happening with teacher licensure, it was presented by CISA Six. They talked about some of the new pathways for individuals, you know, people that live and work in our, in our district may not have a teaching degree, but maybe have a four-year college degree, and what are the steps that they would need to take to become a licensed teacher? There's a lot of things that have changed in that area that I wasn't aware of. So, I think it's super exciting that we'll have more options, I guess, ahead of us for those that may have had a previous career. But, you know what, that just wasn't it for me. And I've got a gift. I've got an experience to share that I think I can share with a lot of students and help them. And, you know, it doesn't sound like there's a long enduring program to get these people involved in becoming a teacher. And so, thank you to the district for letting me be part of it. It's just every year, it's just amazing what, what gets discussed and brought together in front of, I don't know, it's, it's just good. So, good networking.
Agreed.
Okay. Anything else? Last minutes? We're all good?
Looking forward, looking forward to getting my recordings, since I wasn't able to make it. I do have eight recordings coming, but they're not done yet.
Thirty-six hours, we're.
And they're doing a really good job on that. I mean, last year, COVID, they didn't have it at all, and that was their only option, right? And, and because things come up that you simply can't make it, and you still have the opportunity to be part of what was going on there, so.
No matter where I went, they came and filmed with me right in the foreground. It was always my big head. I'm trying to move back. I don't know, I couldn't.
We'll see you in photos next year. Okay, very good. Next, we go on to District Related Positive Happenings. I bet you we got a bunch. Who's starting?
Go ahead. Did you wanna talk about the fishing team, or you want me to talk?
No, go right ahead. Go ahead.
So, we had a, two events recently for our ice fishing club, and one was on Thunder Lake. That was the one that was the first Saturday of January. And our students competed against 48 other, it was a statewide competition. It was for panfish only. So, the, the team chose Thunder Lake, and throughout the competition, throughout the day, I guess they won by about 20 inches and caught a number of perch, bluegills, and crappies, and, you know, beat 48 other teams around the state. And then, yeah, so it was a great accomplishment, and the weather was cold. They were in shacks and trying to be as mobile as possible, jumping around, but it was successful there. And then last weekend, they were on Lake Managua, and there were only 10 teams there, but still competed against especially the Lakeland team, which
Picking them on the whole ice.
Cold there, quite close, favorites there. Went over there and competed, and that was of all species. And they ended up winning that competition. It was real close, but won that competition as well. And I think the, the last event will be on the peatmud flowage here in February. I know that Mr. Stotts and Mr. Lorenz are heading up the team, so. So, I think they can bring home a, yeah, a little medal first place trophy, peatmud.
I've got one, and if you follow some of the great work Jen does putting stuff out on Facebook and our website, you would know this already probably, but so it might not be news. But definitely wanna honor the fact that we have a Finance and Investment Challenge Bowl team that is gonna represent us at the state competition here later this school year in May. Also, Ms. Pulver did a really kind of cool thing this year, and there was, there was a bracket set up and for a couple of, it seemed like a couple of weeks, right? That she selected teams of kids who were interested in the competition, and they had a neat little tournament down on the bulletin board, you know. And actually, the team that ended up winning out of the school year lost early on and, you know, came back through the, through the loser bracket, got back into the championship round, and then beat the championship team twice. It was pretty cool. The, the finals were in the auditorium for staff and students who wanted to watch, and it was, it was eye-opening for me. I'm like, wow, there's, we've got some pretty, kids who are pretty well-bursted in that area. And then Ms. Pulver was very pleasantly surprised and impressed, because I guess, I don't think this happened last year. They'd probably had hold an in-person competition, but it sounds like she's been going there for quite some time with, with teams. And as, you know, one team did make it through, and it sounds like, like Rheinlander alone, I think, had eight or 10 different teams in the competition, and then there was a number of other schools, six or seven of them from, from the region. We've never made it out before. And we made it out, and I wouldn't bet against them down there at Madison. They're really, they're pretty solid. So, we should be proud of that. Their brains are working overtime in that Finance and Investment Challenge Bowl. So, kind of a cool thing.
I was actually gonna piggy up on that one, 'cause I thought that was really impressive, seeing our students put on stage and performing the way that they did. And, you know, and I think it just proves a point where, you know, it, it shows the work that our students, staff, parents, everybody involved, what a little school like ours can do. We can compete against the best and, and be on top of the best. That's, that's a cool thing. So, yeah. Todd?
Sure Camp had their conservation speeches right after Christmas break. We had 10 students compete in the school level, and then we sent those on all of them onto the county level. And they determined kind of what the order was, and we had one student lock them out who was going to be going on to regionals. And then usually, we've been pretty fortunate. Usually, if we send somebody to regionals, they will go on to state, so.
Go ahead.
So, at that, we have a few up to play 6D competition going on right now, shooting free throws, which is pretty important. And, yeah, we're starting early. So, then we have a Olympic competition coming up next week, Wednesday, with all the kids. My sixth graders are gonna be kind of running around and helping some of the younger kids participate in some different events. So, that's coming up too, so.
Very good. Anybody else? Just a couple of things to share. When I was down at the convention, I got a number of people that complimented the district and some of the staff that they've worked with at various levels. And, you know, when they saw the little tag that said Three Lakes School District, that usually got a positive response, and that our little district is known even down in Milwaukee. And Jen, I got a compliment to you also from one of the vendors that has a home in Three Lakes, doesn't have any students, but just has a second home. And she says, "Who is doing all that work with the community outreach and, and communication?" She says, "She's, that person does an incredible job." I says, "I will make sure I pass it on." Yeah?
That makes the day better.
So, yeah, good stuff. All right. We'll move on to the next one, and it is correspondence. Do we have anything there?
I do not have any correspondence for you this one.
Okay, all right. So, final with an executive session. We will adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 1985, one paragraph C to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically to consider staffing levels, individual staff contract, contracts, hiring of staff, and/or resignation of staff. I'll take a roll call vote. Well, first of all, a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Motion to adjourn to executive session. Second.
Okay, motion by Colette, second by Stacy, and roll call vote. Stacy?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Colette?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
All right, motion passes four zero. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Have a great evening. And maybe we'll see you next.